Call this meeting of the Brooklyn City Council or order. Mary Jo, can you please call the roll?
Kevin Tansky.
Here.
Bart Politzky.
Here.
Ron Van Kirk.
Here.
Mac Ryan Shaki.
Here.
Andy Seltzerz.
Here.
Kathy Pucci.
Here.
Mary Bell Bear.
Mary Bell Bear is absent this evening, excused. Would you please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance? And please remain standing following the pledge of allegiance for a moment of silence requested by Councilman Pucci.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to its sovereign public, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
Thank you. At the start of this evening's meeting, I want to welcome our new Recreation Commissioner officially, Mr. Jack Brusie. Glad to have you. Welcome, sir. Welcome to the Brooklyn team. The first item on the agenda is approval of minutes for the meeting dated April 8, 2019. Any comments or questions?
Move to approve.
Thank you.
To approve: Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Bart Politzky.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Mac Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Andy Seltzerz.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
At this time, we'll have the public session. If anyone in the audience has anything to say for the good and well of the city of Brooklyn, please step forward, state your name and address, and you'll be recognized. Please remember to keep your comments to five minutes or fewer.
Good evening. My name is Earl Blom, 4720, Porsetts Drive. I'm here tonight to encourage everyone to vote for Issue 1, our school tenure emergency levy on May 7. We are at a very critical moment in the funding for our schools and our children's education. The state has abandoned Brooklyn schools with the decrease and lack of funding for our school. They have essentially told us we are on our own. The state of Ohio has slashed approximately $6 million since 2010 and will cut another $8 million over the next four years. In addition, because we are considered a capped or rich district, we are receiving less than one-third of the amount per student of what we should be receiving. The school and the Board of Education has looked at these figures very closely and has determined that if we are to maintain the present level of education and to continue to offer our children the educational opportunities that they deserve, that they had to go to the citizens of Brooklyn and ask for a levy that would generate $2.25 million a year. This is a fixed levy, would cost a Brooklyn homeowner of a $100,000 home an additional $20 per month for 10 years. This amount cannot increase in the amount that the schools will receive or the amount that it will cost the taxpayers per year. It is fixed. I know that there is a lot of talk about the Cup Patterson proposal in the state legislature for school funding. It is just now a proposal, now with many meetings and reviews before it will possibly pass, if it will pass in the future. The final outcome is not known, but if it were to pass in its present state, it would mean an increase in state funding to the Brooklyn schools next year of only $600,000 per year. This is grossly insufficient to meet the needs of our children and our Brooklyn school. By law, Brooklyn schools have to balance that budget every year and cannot operate in the negative. If the present loss of funding is not replaced with the passage of this levy, Issue 1, on May 7, cuts will have to be made in the school operating expenses. These cuts will include cuts in staffing, meaning loss of teachers, administrators, and support personnel. It also means cuts in programs, including sports, music, and the arts. These cuts will happen, much to everyone's dismay, and will seriously affect and hurt our children. The bottom line is, if we don't help our children in school, no one else will. Our children deserve the best educational opportunities that we can provide for them. Good education costs money, money from each of us. A strong school system benefits everyone in the city, especially our children. Please don't deny our children the educational opportunities that they deserve. Vote yes on Issue 1 on May 7. Thank you.
Good evening. John Wagner, 4825, Bedwood Drive, and proud to be a neighbor of his. Two things tonight, very quickly. Number one, totally support what my neighbor just said. We moved recently from North Carolina, where the school systems do not even begin to give you the support that we've learned and gotten here in Brooklyn. I have a 14-year-old autistic, high-function autistic child, and our experience with Brooklyn High School has been exceptional. There's been tremendous support, help, and giving us the guidance and the resources to help her become everything she can become. That's the first thing. Second thing, I am also going to turn around, I'm going to give you my other hat. I am a recruiting assistant for the U.S. government's Department of Commerce Census 2020. I just want to remind everybody that's coming up. We have a lot of highly-paid jobs, even though they're temporary, they can last up to 18 months. I'd love to talk to anybody that would like to see me after the meeting outside. I can give them some information, they can follow up. And I also want to thank all the people behind me and next to me who have already supported this effort, and we will get through the census, we have no choice. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. Anyone else? Okay, well now move on to the reports of committees, commissions, and boards. We'll begin this evening with the Finance Committee. We did meet in our normal time at 6:30 prior to the council meeting to discuss issues of finance. We meet every 6:30 prior to the council meeting in the conference room. Everyone is welcome to attend. There were three items, the first of which was the bid requests for our Streets program for this year, and that Streets program includes Hurricane Alley, the city portion of that down by the library, Ansonia, West Bitoff, and Clinton Road. Those are the road construction this year as part of our upkeep of the streets. And the winning bid for them is from TC Construction for an amount of $1,053,681.05. This is an 8.7% increase over what our engineer anticipated the cost to be, but they were the lowest investment of the four that were received, and they're not sure of a start date, but they anticipate being completed by October the 25th. Next up was ordinance 2019-20. This is authorized the purchase of a 2019 Ford 12-passenger bus that will be used by our Service Department, and it's from Valley Ford Truck. The total cost is $169,579. Of that total amount, $53,504 is covered by a grant from NAWACA, the Northeast Ohio Area-Wide Coordinating Agency. They'll be paying that money from the grant, and then the city portion will be $16,075. And then the last ordinance was ordinance 2019-21, and this is an ordinance from the county seeking consent for the resurfacing of Ridge Road from Memphis-Dennison Avenue. And we had some questions regarding what the actual Brooklyn portion of that will be. We were given a number of $115,000, but the Finance Director's going to follow up to make sure that that's the actual dollar amount and stays within the confines of the money that we receive from the licensing fees here in the city of Brooklyn. And so we'll be voting on that at the next meeting. And that is all we have for Finance. Next up is the Recreation Board, Councilman Tansky.
Thank you. Good evening. 2019 Brooklyn Eye Show will be held on Friday, April 26, Saturday, 27, at the Recreation Center at 7:00 p.m. Doors open at 6:00 p.m. Adults $10, students and seniors $6. There will be performances from our Brooklyn Learn to Skate Program, Brooklyn Figure Skating Club, and other guest performers. Summer youth baseball and softball registration will continue through May 6. Resident rates are $55, non-residents $75, three- and four-year-olds $50, school rate $65. Brooklyn's Learn to Swim registration begins May 1. Swim team for ages six and up will begin on May 29 through July 27. All participants must be able to swim one length of a pole. Private swim lessons are also available at the Rec Center for ages five and up. Summer camp will run from June 10 through July 19, 8:00 a.m. till 2:45 p.m. daily for resident children ages five through 12, who reside in Brooklyn, attend a Brooklyn school, or who has a parent working in Brooklyn. Registration begins May 1. Resident rates are $275, school group, corporate, partnership, $345. Fee does not include field trips. For info, call the Brooklyn Rec Center at 216-351-5334. To register online, go to www activityrec.com. Next Recreation Board will be held on May 20 in the Rec Center meeting room at 7:00 p.m., and that concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. One of my fellow councilmen said that I stated that the ban is for the Service Department, it's actually for the seniors. I don't know if I said that incorrectly. If I did, I apologize. It's actually for the senior center, not the Service Department. Sorry, John, you don't get a new ban. It's for the senior center. All right? The Public Safety and Environmental Committee met following our last council meeting to discuss some information regarding some health statistics that were included in the county's health assessment of the city of Brooklyn. This was brought about by the meeting of the Steering Committee during the master plan for the city of Brooklyn. And some of the information inside of it was a bit alarming to some of the residents, and so we invited the Board of Health here to have this meeting. Terry Allen was so gracious to come from that meeting. Our main concern was the information that was inside of it regarding the health statistics, basically where they came from and how they were able to get those statistics. Unfortunately, Terry was not able to give us that information. He was puzzled about it, just as we were, and told me he would follow up on that. I did follow up with an email to him, and he responded, saying that he's planning on meeting with the County Planning Commission, so they're on the same page, and that he'll follow up with us whenever he has more information. So I will keep everyone apprised of that. Next up is our Domestic Abuse Commission, Councilman Ryan Shaki.
Thank you. The Domestic Abuse Commission will be meeting on Thursday, April 25, at the Brooklyn Fire Station Community Room. We will also be hosting an event this Sunday at Michael's Craft Store in Ridge Park Square. In recognition of April being Child Abuse Prevention Month, we will be on hand with information and resources in addition to a free craft for kids. The kids will be able to make and/or color a pinwheel to take home. Pinwheels are the symbol for child abuse prevention. We hope to see you at Michael's between 1:00 and 3:00 p.m. on this Sunday, April 28. And that ends my report.
Thank you. Next is our Board of Zoning Appeals, Commissioner Kohlser.
Thank you, Mr. Van Kirk. The Board of Zoning Appeals met on April 18 and heard requests from Adam signs, first being for 108 square-foot variance to the maximum area for a new freestanding sign. It's for the plaza on the existing foundation at 6910 Bitoff Avenue. The second request was for a four-foot height variance for this same freestanding sign, and the third was for 14-foot variance for the distance from the right-of-way for this freestanding sign at Bitoff Plaza. All were passed, and the next meeting for Board of Zoning Appeals is scheduled for May 16, and at 6:00 p.m. here in the City Hall Conference Room. That completes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Kohlser. The Planning Commission met, or excuse me, the next Planning Commission meeting, I should say, will take place on Thursday, May 2, at 6:00 p.m. in the City Hall Conference Room, and the next meeting, the following, will be heard. An amendment to the prior approved plans from Epic Signs and Graphics for an LED message board on existing freestanding business identification sign for Valley College at 8720 Brook Park Road. A request from Blink signs for an internally illuminated wall sign for Loving Cup Child Care at 4476 Ridge Road. A request from Olio Development Group for a final site plan and sign approval for a Raising Canes Restaurant at 5180 Teedman Road. And a request from Swenson's Drive-In for a preliminary site plan approval for a drive-in restaurant at 4660 Ridge Road. And of course, again, that meeting will take place on May 2 at 6:00 p.m., and all are welcome to attend. Next up is our School Board Liaison, Councilman Ryan Shaki.
Thanks again. The Student Achievement Report was given by Mr. Wengler once again. Brooklyn was recognized as a distinguished district for the Project Lead the Way program. Three eighth-grade students, Joe Dennis, Adam Gabbella, and Logan Mulvey, were all at the meeting to discuss what they loved about these courses in our middle school. They are all part of the robotics, yes, robotics class, which offers hands-on learning. Mr. Goodwin, the teacher of the robotics class, is also taking the robotics club to a competition being held in North Hampstead Schools in May. The girls' varsity basketball team was recognized as the winter sports team with the highest GPA. Congratulations, girls. And finally, Superintendent Lycov talked about Issue 1, the emergency operating levy on the ballot. He's been fighting in Columbus for more state money to New O'Vale. Last year, Superintendent Lycov testified twice about the dire need of Brooklyn schools getting the fair state funding they deserve. He's also talked to leaders in Columbus four or five times, but nothing has changed. In regards to the new funding formula, he warned residents that it is just a proposal and could drastically change before being signed into law. Brooklyn wants to continue to offer big school opportunities in a small school setting, and we need the new revenue to be able to do that. That ends my report.
Thank you. We'll now move on with the reports of council. Begin this evening with Mr. Tansky.
No report.
Right, Ms. Politzky.
Thank you, Mr. Van Kirk. Good evening. I hope you had a blessed Happy Easter. My prayers go out to those who are not so fortunate, either by devastating storms in Shelby and throughout the South, or by terror attacks in parts of the world. I thank God every day that we live in a relatively safe geographic area. That old saying, "Best location in the nation" may actually be true. And it was just reported that the Kihaucka River has made a great comeback. Tomorrow at 4:00 p.m., Baba's Kitchen will be back. Fresh fruit and vegetables will be available for those in need. It is located behind City Hall. Please take advantage of this program. The Brooklyn Historical Society monthly meeting is on Wednesday, April 24 at 7:00 p.m. Rebecca McFarland will speak about early Cleveland breweries. They tell me there will be no samples, but other refreshments will be served after the meeting. There will be a jazz concert on April 26 in the high school from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., and the intermediate school will hold their concert on May 8 at 7:00 p.m. in the auditorium. And that ends my report.
Thank you, Ms. Ryan Shaki.
Thank you. The 15th Annual Into the Light Walk will be held on Sunday, May 5 at 6:00 p.m. at the Cleveland Metro Park Zoo. This walk is put on by Life Act, which is the only suicide prevention organization in Ohio that delivers life-saving prevention programs directly to middle school and high school teens in small group settings. Pre-registration is $30 and can be done online at lifeact.org/walk. As this is the last council meeting before the May primary, I want to take time to encourage everyone to do their homework and to vote on Issue 1, the emergency operating levy for the schools. And finally, I was able to make it to the Home Information Workshop last week, provided by the Building Department and the Heritage Home Program. If you weren't able to make it to any of the three sessions, the one from last week is recorded on Facebook Live, so you can get accurate information about the exterior home repair grant program the city is offering this year. The city is currently seeking applications for this program, providing a maximum of $3,000 in the form of a grant to make exterior repairs on your home, including driveways, steps, landscaping, and more. The application can be found on the city website under the Building Department tab. And that ends my report.
Thank you, Mr. Seltzerz.
Thank you. Just two things. The bike rodeo at the schools, that's held in conjunction with Safe Routes to Schools, that will be held on Saturday, May 4, in the morning. Flyers with details about the event will be going out shortly, and also on Issue 1, as everybody else has spoken, please try to support it if you can. I know some households are tied on money. Understand that, but if you can vote yes for it, please do so. And if you have questions, as other people have mentioned, with the various proposals still in the House and the Senate, they're just proposals, nothing's guaranteed yet. We need your votes for it, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Pucci.
Thank you. Good evening. First, I'd like to thank the residents who spoke during the public session this evening. Next, I'd like to welcome our new Rec Commissioner, Jack Brusie. I look forward to working with you. We have a tentative date for a Safe Routes to School meeting, and that is May 3, and this is to discuss the infrastructure grant that we were awarded. And regarding Issue 1, I did want to expand on something that Mr. Blom mentioned, and that is that how important it is to understand that once this levy is passed, that those funds never go up. It's natural to assume that as our property values rise, that all of the property taxes that we pay go up, and this just is not the case. Due to House Bill 920 that was passed decades ago, most of the school funding is frozen to the value of what your property was when it was originally passed. So, for example, we just went through a reevaluation of all of our properties, and I believe most people's property values did increase. So what you're paying in property taxes to the city, the county, metro parks, the library, the Port Authority, all those do increase as your property values rise. However, the vast majority of the levies paid to the schools do not increase. So the increase that the schools saw under this recent reevaluation was roughly $100,000, which is a very, very small amount when you compare it to a $15 million budget that they have. So as Mr. Seltzerz mentioned, you know, please, if you can support it, please do so. It is important to maintaining a strong and vibrant community, and if there are any questions anybody has on anything relating to the schools, it's much better to contact the superintendent or a school board member rather than just word of mouth or what's posted on social media. And that completes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a couple of things. I'd first like to, as Ms. Politzky mentioned, offer my condolences to the families of those believers in Sri Lanka who lost their lives in another terrorist attack, this time against Christians. The census loss of life is always tragic, but to commit such an act, heinous act, on the holiest of Christian holidays is reprehensible. So my prayers are with those that are affected by this act, and of course, I thank God for the safety that he gave worshippers here in the United States yesterday, and I trust all who celebrate Resurrection Sunday that you had a blessed day. I would also like to publicly thank Governor DeWine for following through on his word and signing into law the Heartbeat Bill. The protection of innocent life is at the very foundation of government, and I applaud our legislature and our governor for passing this law in Ohio. I believe that life is a gift from God and should be protected, and this does take a giant step towards that protection. I'd also like to congratulate my fellow councilwoman, Ryan Shaki, on the passage of ordinance 2019-7 at our last meeting, and this is the domestic violence ordinance that she worked so hard on, and your desire to protect those harmed by domestic violence is to be applauded. As I just stated, the protection of human life is at the core of governmental responsibility, and so this ordinance, I believe, will help with that protection. For those interested, there is a very well-written article on Cleveland.com about this ordinance. It was also featured on News Channel 19, and so thank you, Councilman, for your work on this issue. As evidenced by the sunshine outside, the weather is turning nicer, so please be aware of children that are outside for the first time in many months, that they like to dart out in the streets, so just make sure we're extra cautious. Also, as a final note, as you know, the gas tax has been increased, it will go into effect soon, and we got some information this last week regarding the portion that Brooklyn will receive from that increase, and these are just estimates, but it's estimated in 2020, we'll receive an additional $271,000, in 2021, $274,000. So no one wants to pay higher gas taxes, obviously, right? But at least Brooklyn will be receiving some of those funds as they come in. And we'll now move on with our Director's Reports. We begin this evening with Mr. Brusie.
Good evening, City Council. A couple of items to share. So I sent in my first quarter financial report to City Council last week. So overall, our general fund revenues pretty much in line with prior year first quarter at 2% over through March 2019. Expenses are right in line with prior year expenses at $2,000 over of 2018 levels. So we're right in line where we anticipated revenues and expenses as well. And also, just another reminder that our budget work session will be on June 3. So on the agenda for this work session, we're going to be discussing the tax budget, as well as the initial five-year general fund revenue forecast as we go forward with the five-year general fund financial forecast, so setting the revenues will be the first step in that process. And also, we'll be discussing some policies as far as our current investment policy and an introduction of a debt management policy. So that'll be on June 3. That concludes my report tonight.
Thank you, sir. Next up is our Service Director, Mr. Burbank.
Thank you, Councilman. The city of Brooklyn is excited to announce that it will begin to deliver mulch to its residents on a first-come, first-served basis, beginning on May 6. During the year, the Service Department collected over 2,000 tons of yard waste material, which includes leaves picked up during the fall, chipped trees, branches, and the weekly yard waste that's picked up curbside, beginning in April and ending in November. The Service Department had a contractor grind the material, put it in windrows at the compost site. The windrows are turned, and the temperatures are monitored, and we currently have 400 yards ready to be delivered to the residents. The material can be used as mulch or used in the soil in their gardens and landscape beds. The Service Department will deliver one load of compost, which approximately weighs two and a half yards. Residents must call the Service Department at 216-635-4232 to arrange for delivery. You must also fill out a waiver form that can be found on the city's website tomorrow morning. Once delivered, the compost must be dispersed up within 21 days. Second loads will be delivered after all first-load requests have been met, and again, that's while quantities last. Construction on American Road will start on May 8 with a completion date of October 18. Construction is also starting this week on the slope at Ridge Road by the Best Buy Hill. Completion for that project is October 1. Please expect delays in traffic in that area. And residents, they had their gas lines replaced last year in the torrents area. They will be out at the end of the month to restore your tree lines. And that completes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Burbank. Good information. We'll now move on with our legislation for this evening. We begin, first of all, with a bid approval for the 2019 Streets program, and this is the $1,053,681,05 that I mentioned in the Finance Report from TC Construction.
Motion to approve a bid to TC Construction amount of $1,053,681,05.
Second.
To approve the bid: Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Bart Politzky.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Mac Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Andy Seltzerz.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Ordinance 2019-17 is on second reading and requested suspension to adopt this evening as amending Section 331.45, use of mobile telephones while operating a motor vehicle of the codified orders of the city of Brooklyn. We really haven't talked about this in the council meeting, so I wanted to read the changes that are on here, and, Chief, if I get them wrong, please let me know. So the ordinance will read 331.45, use of mobile telephones while operating a vehicle -- and I want to make sure I pulled the right word. So a mobile phone means a telephone with access to a cellular radio system, so it can be used over a wider range without a physical connection to a network. Two, use means to use a mobile phone by text messaging, typing, reading, or scrolling on the mobile phone's, mobile telephone screen or display, dialing, answering, talking, or listening. And then it takes out some of the other items on here that I don't think are really pertinent to that, but basically, Chief, the push behind this is you can't be on your phone at all, essentially, is what you're saying. Is that correct?
Correct. We added the word texting, which really didn't exist in 1999.
Sure. And that would cover, like, you know, scrolling through Facebook, which I'm sure no one ever does, all right? But that would come along.
It's all me.
Yeah, exactly. Okay. Is that correct, though? Accurate, same line?
Correct.
Anything else?
Oh, okay. Trying to update it.
Sure. Makes sense. So I raise my all, suspend the rules.
Suspend.
To suspend the rules: Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Bart Politzky.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Mac Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Andy Seltzerz.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
To adopt: Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Bart Politzky.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Mac Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Andy Seltzerz.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Next is ordinance 2019-18. This is on second reading, also being requested to pass by suspension of the rules. This is adopting new Section 149.17, positions of the codified orders of the city of Brooklyn. I talked about this last time, but this would remove the Civil Service Commission requirement for the part-time employees at the Recreation Center. Can you dispel or suspend the rules?
Suspend.
Second. This is, this needs to be amended. Reminding you? It needs to be amended first. I have a different motion for amending.
I'll make a motion if we amend.
Because we added the position.
I'll read the amendments. Right, so I read section 1, 149.17, positions. Council may establish and amend from time to time such full-time and part-time and seasonal positions both within and outside the classified civil services are necessary to implement the recreation programs and service departments. And being all part-time, hourly-rated, and seasonal positions within the recreation program and service department are designated unclassified civil service positions. And I'll make a motion if we amend, as right in the record.
Second. To amend, Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Bart Palitsky.
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Andy Selberts.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
I raise my all suspending rules.
It's amended.
It's amended.
To sus-, sorry, to suspend the rules, Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Bart Palitsky.
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Andy Selberts.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
To adopt, as amended, Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Bart Palitsky.
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Andy Selberts.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Next up on first reading is ordinance 2019-19, to amend section six of ordinance 2010-26 entitled Establishing General Admission Rates at the John M. Cohen Recreation Center Auditorium. This is on first reading, but the change in the policy is in regards to unaccompanied children. It used to be children 6 years of age and under must be accompanied by an adult at all times in the water in the facility. Then children 7 and 8 must be accompanied by an adult 18 years of age and over while using the facility. And this new ordinance would change that to 11 years old must be accompanied by an adult under 11, children 11 and under must be accompanied by an adult, and then raise the age from 7 and 8 to the age of 9 the rest of the Recreation Center. And that's on first reading. Ordinance 2019-20, authorizing the purchase of one 2019 Ford 12-passenger bus for use by the Senior Services Department from Valley Ford Truck Incorporated for a total cost of $69,579. Any comments or questions? Right, I raise my all suspending rules.
Second. To suspend the rules, Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Bart Palitsky.
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Andy Selberts.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
To adopt, Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Bart Palitsky.
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Andy Selberts.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
And then lastly, is ordinance 2019-21 is on first reading. This is a consent ordinance for the resurfacing of Ridge Road from Memphis Avenue to Dennison Avenue. And we will vote on this by suspension of the rules in the next meeting after we get the information that we requested from Mr. Reguus. That does conclude our agenda this evening. We are going to move into executive session to discuss a matter of the purchase of public property. We will come back in and we will simply adjourn the meeting. No further business will be done after that executive session. Does anyone else on council, or the directors, have anything else they need to add?
Are you, is any?
Right, so I move that council move into executive session to discuss the sale of public property. And in that meeting will be our Service Director and our Recreation Commissioner as well as council. And Finance Director as well, sorry. You can say Finance, I apologize, sorry. Didn't mean to exclude you there.
Second. To adjourn to executive session, Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Bart Palitsky.
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Andy Selberts.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. Have a lovely evening.